Before we get into the meeting, please Reverend Williams, could you give us a moment of prayer, please?
Let us pray. Father God, we come no other way but leaning on your everlasting love. Realize, Father, that here is, here in the city, actually, is a city of love, Father. We just ask that you continue to show love and bind us together with love, unity, and strength in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All rise for pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Present.
Councilmember Watley.
Present.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
And Mayor Protim Howard.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
You have a full house and a floor.
Thank you, ma'am. We're right into approval of the agenda with the addition of item C.
Some move.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Ayes have, and motion carries. All right, brings us to presentations. Please approach. We have our board members from Wayne Westland Public Schools. Can you guys could all introduce yourselves?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Nawana Abney Mitchell, Board Education Member for the Wayne Westland School District and also an Inster resident.
Hi, my name is Melody Hines, Wayne Westland Board of Education, been on there nine years. Grew up in Inster, went to Wayne Westland Schools. It's an honor to be before you today.
Good evening. I am Kimberly May. I am the board treasurer for Wayne Westland Community Schools, School Board, and it is a pleasure to be here this evening.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Well, we are here today to present the City of Inster with a trophy. Last week, we had our champions breakfast, which we had 700-plus champions in attendance. We had firefighters and mayors and city council from other cities, and it was an honor and pleasant to have Inster named on that program. Although this was the first champion breakfast, this was the first time Inster name was on the program. And I just ask you guys to come out and be champions for the Wayne Westland School District. I can't do it by myself. Our district is superintendent and the district's board members are willing and they are looking forward and eager to working with Inster. Just yesterday, on a Sunday, me and the superintendent was talking about adult education, and we not talking about adult education, GED and high school level. We are talking about tech and trading schools. So to have this to come to pass, we need you guys support. Because like I tell the district, our kids go there. Our kids is getting their education, but they coming right back home. We need to help our parents. I have always been for the parent. To get the parent out there, because we know when the household income numbers increase, then things at the family, they respect levels. Their ability to buy goods and needs for their family change, and that makes people start feeling better around the house. Like when mom is feeling good, the whole house is working well. But Melody is going to share some things. We just had graduations this weekend. We had three graduations, four war ceremonies, a prom for our disability kids. It was a great weekend in the Wayne Westland School District.
And I'd like to say, I'm proud to announce that Wayne Memorial itself got $14 million just in scholarships and John Green 45 million. Yes. And then we're also proud that, you know, with Inster being a part of Wayne Westland Schools, we have an amazing program with our career college readiness. So I was telling the fire chief and the police chief, we just got approved the William D. Ford Technical Center, a fire academy. It's approved, and a police academy, and we got a $3.5 million grant from Maschita Tolete to build a fire training facility in Wayne County. So it's going to be able to help our kids in the area. We received $835,000 from Simca to do a summer training program for our kids. We just had a partnership with LUNIA, one of the unions. And so I think eight kids was able to get an apprenticeship making $24 an hour for the summer. We do have, and I want to get with you all too, with Dr. Dignan, with our partnership for the summer with our interns. So they're paying them $14 an hour. So we got $835,000 for summer interns, so definitely I'd like to get you all with Dr. Dignan, you know, get our kids some additional work. I'm actually excited to say that we have these programs. We brought back the sports. So we have over 450 kids playing soccer, 250 playing basketball, cheerleading. We feed the kids breakfast, lunch, and dinner. We have two buses that come out, one at 4:30, one at 6:30. If you're in like an after-school program, you get a bus home. So there's a lot of amazing programs. We just had a career, or actually a skill trades job fair a couple of weeks ago. So we had the companies come out with the bricklayers, carpenter meal rights, offering these different apprenticeships for like $24 an hour. So it's just a lot of new things we're doing in Wayne Westland. I definitely would like you all to be a part, you know. And whenever we can bring information, like we got these booklets here that talks about all of our different partnerships and resource guides. And we also approved middle college, so the kids get 60 free college credit hours for free. And we have an innovative, yeah, no debt.
Melody, can you tell them about that house?
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So, yes, so our construction kids, they built a beautiful house, $235,000 so far. Beautiful house. We work with the City of Westland. It's with the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. So I definitely like to look into that with the City of Inster, because that house was amazing. And they've had this program for quite some time. But the kids build a house from ground up, and I can send you guys the pictures. It was amazing. And $235,000 for a house, and it goes right back into the pot, and then they keep building more houses.
And when they build that house, they build, they put everything in the house together as of for the shingles and the bricks. So they did all the plumbing, all the electrician. And these are our kids. These are our kids in our community, in the surrounding communities. And as we heard y'all talk about fire and police, our kids can be trained while they are in high school to be a firefighter, to be an MET, to be a police officer. We have all those programs, and they coming together more and more. And what I'm trying to do is also let some adults in those programs. So things are going well, and I just, you know, the board meetings are the last Monday of every month at 7:00 PM. If I can just get a few people, every, I thought it was the fourth Monday. Well, it's on a Monday at 7:00 PM.
Just make sure you there, Nawana.
I just like to see some people out in the audience sometime, you know. If we come, they gonna start giving us what we want, because they like, oh, there's a lot of them. You know how it is. You feed one person a piece of chicken, then they bring somebody else, and then they bring four people back. Oh, yeah, let's start giving them something. But we need to work together. This is so exciting for me to be elected on the Wayne Westland School District. I have learned so much in a short time. But we gonna present you guys with a trophy, and the trophy is in appreciation for your dedication and service to the Wayne Westland Community Schools. And also I have bags for all the council people, so if y'all want to come down. It don't happen if it ain't Melody didn't post it.
I think to get these little things. Hello, how you doing? Thank you. This is nice.
No, that's fine.
I know.
Make sure all the members out.
I brought you one. I'm sorry. I didn't pass. They just asked me how many people it was. But it's about the information in there about this school.
Oh, we were thinking they have, they're paying for driving, training, training for kids.
It's for the work base, for the work base. So they not paying for it. They had to earn it.
Yes.
Yeah. Probably just wait to the end. Wait to the end.
You need my picture. I got him a mask.
Oh. Thank you.
You can ask anybody. Try and find a picture of me, okay?
That is true.
And when you do find it, I'm looking like, people tell me y'all to be ashamed of myself, because you can see, I am not happy.
That's wonderful.
All right, Trey. Troy, push the door, please. All right. First public hearing. Motion to open the public hearing for the Inster Stormwater Control.
Some move.
Your second.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Ayes have, and motion carries.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the audience here. We are here on behalf of Department of Public Service, Water Department, to ask you to open up for a hearing for storm water. And Carrie is going to give brief information on what this is about. Carrie is my engineer from the Alphabellis.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. The stormwater ordinance is a requirement for the National Pollution Discharge Elimination permit that the city maintains, specifically the MS-4 permit, which is the Municipal Storm Sewer Separation System. The city has decided to adopt the Wayne County's version of the ordinance so that they may be able to review projects that require stormwater facilities when they're developed. If those stormwater facilities discharge to a city system, then the city is allowed to review that, make sure that they're using the correct applications and stormwater facilities as per Wayne County's ordinance, which we've adopted or which the City of Inster is adopting. If, and then approve that and see it through construction. If that development is actually discharging to Wayne County's system, then Wayne County would, as they're doing now, review the project and the plans and then issue a permit for it. So that's the biggest difference between the two. Once this is adopted, the city will take over a portion of the review. Any questions?
Well, this is a public hearing. Any questions as it relates to what's being presented? Please come, come.
In layman terms, what does that, what does that mean for us as far as flooding? How does that affect?
So as far as flooding goes, when a developer makes improvements on his site, he or she is required to discharge that runoff when it rains at a controlled lower rate instead of a higher rate, which is helping with the control of potential flooding. So the city will review it, or the county will review it, to make sure that the facility is in place to do that, so that you don't have a big surge of water coming out of their pot. And secondly, it also treats the pollutants before. That's the main reason for the ordinance, is to make sure that the pollutants are treated before they leave the city. Any potential. Not everyone has pollutants.
Go ahead, sir.
We initially need to fill another basin. The guy now who's talking about is outfalls and what going to the county. So we did a basin, though, ready to put it there. Will we have to build a third basin?
Actually, this ordinance is for, this ordinance is to monitor the water before it ever gets to a basin. Make sure that the pollutants are reduced as much as possible before the water is sent to either the city's system, which some of it ends up in the storm, in the basins. Some of it actually is discharged directly to the river. Or the river. Yeah. So.
What do you know that they should have, that all this, this always incident, pollution, that will be built basin?
So. Yeah. So the basins collect stormwater and, which is not treated, and also some sanitary sewer that is definitely not treated, and treats it before it's released.
This is being more towards commercial business, like in Carolina, where they have to be on contention that they can run. We would now oversee that. But before, they had to go to the county to pull up their bid. Well, this is within the city of Inster, then. Now we will collect that. So now we would collect their revenue versus and speed up process, because now it would be in-house, be reviewed by us unless it's a county property. If it's county property, then the county has to review it. But if it's a local property, then Carrie can go out and review it, and we will collect their money for the city.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So when they do the, the president, if they're not maintained, if they're not being maintained now, like if they created the place where it's supposed to be, but not being maintained now, who, and what, what body will be governing that? And what are the penalties to find when that's not happening?
Well, we have a mechanism in place already for that. When I come before council and I bring a resolution from the county to get them set up to do a storm warning. So now we would be collecting that. We would be the enforcement, the city itself.
And that will take place when?
Once, this is the first public hearing, then we have a second public hearing on June. And then if they decide to vote and adopt it, then we have to get it, it's codified by the city clerk, and then it goes. I can't speak to that, because the city clerk has to get it codified. But yeah, we will become the enforcement for the city. As long as the city, you have it local. But if it's like Middle Belt or Michigan Avenue or Inster Road, then that's county problem. But like you said on Dunne, Carrie and I will be doing that. But we will be the enforcement with the city.
Anything else? Hearing none, motion to close public hearing?
Some move.
Your second.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes?
Thank you.
Ayes have, and motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Next public hearing. Motion to open up a public hearing for the Inster proposed budget, FY 2023-24. It was your pleasure.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Your second.
Second.
Moved and properly second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Ayes have, and motion carries, Mr. Green.
Mr. Green, before you stand up, before we go into this public hearing, I would like to ask my colleagues. Councilwoman Watley brought up a good point, that we really didn't go over a lot of this. If we can do something maybe Friday and just go straight into it, have the public hearing for the audience if they have questions. But for me, it was hard, because I didn't get through all of it. If that sounds okay to you guys. I mean, I've been suggesting that, but I'm only one vote, but.
Unfortunately, Friday I won't be available. I won't be available Friday.
Well, okay.
So in addition to, I'm hearing, just talking with the clerk, because she had to publish this as it relates to the public hearing.
Right. We still go through it, but I'm just saying that like, whether we have a whole lot of questions. But go ahead. Yeah, that's all I was just.
Got you. So let me just make this point, because at the meeting on June the 20th, Plant Moran will be coming before us. Plant Moran is our, kind of like your, the folks that basically put all the financials together and then present it to us, basically working with the treasurer. And treasurer, of course, is checking them and going through them. So they'll be here to present to us the budget, along with the pretty graphs that you guys are used to, along with hopefully the water rates too, correct, Mr. Bivens?
I'll have to reach Dr. Bryant to make sure, but knowing if he's coming, yes.
Yes. So he did, he did say that, that he would be doing that, but just make sure. And at that meeting, it's our hope, of course, to go through the budget and the way that they will explain it to us. But hearing now as it relates to the public being here, any questions that you all may have or suggestions that you would like to make, you want to hear from you as it relates to that. And then understanding, because this is very sensitive, of course, to all of us, that at the next meeting, we will feel questions also from the general public. The budget is actually posted in the clerk's office for review, but also we can upload it online, correct? We can upload it online. So, you know, in between now and the 20th, if any more questions come up from the public, we can hear from you. Then also too, you can also email your questions directly to the clerk. So as it relates to this particular body, we know that this is a living document that's always changing. It should be anyway. And as it relates to suggestions or cuts or additions, if it's, you know, moving through this process, it relates to the public hearing being posted, we have to have some action. I mean, not action, but at least discussion tonight. So, Mr. Green, you want to just kind of talk to us?
Yeah, so basically, you know, we basically going into the budget for next year. We're trying to stay within the DEP. We're in a deficit.
So speak, speak. When you say, don't say acronym, say the deficit elimination plan and so on, so everybody understand what's going on.
Okay. So the DEP is the deficit elimination plan, which the city has been under, I think started in what, '21 maybe, I believe? So we had to redo the deficit elimination plan, come up with some new numbers. Those budget, that budget is set for the next three years according to the state. We've agreed with the state, this is what we're going to do to get out of the deficit. So it's pretty much set. But what we can do is still make adjustments as long as we stay within that deficit elimination plan. So that's what the body is doing, you know, trying to see where we should put our, you know, money and our expenses, but still staying within that deficit elimination plan.
So because we agreed to the DEP, the deficit elimination plan with the state, that's basically where we should be all the time or lower.
Yes.
It's our bottom line.
At least be with the DEP. Now, what we put together, what we're proposing is better than the DEP. So, you know, hopefully we can achieve that goal, but, you know, we definitely have to at least stick within the DEP.
So what happens if we don't stick within the deficit elimination plan?
Well, you mean if it gets worse?
Right.
Like they made me redo the plan last year, they may make me redo another deficit elimination. Which takes a long time for me to do, but I mean, if it's a requirement, it's something that has to be done. So the state makes that, they make that call.
So we did have, I believe, a very fruitful meeting with the state. The state came out last, was it Friday? Yep, Friday. Last Friday, Councilman Chisholm along with Councilman Williams, the treasurer, and the clerk and myself met with the deputy treasurer for the state of Michigan, along with his cohort and then Plant Moran as it relates to just the city overall and, of course, where we're at. So they have a different approach than, say, in 2011, than just coming into a city and taking over. They, of course, want to help us. They're going to be here as well at that particular meeting on January the 20th. I don't know if the deputy is going to actually come out himself, but one of his people are going to come out, because it's just important as we're all working together to, you know, really maintain what we're doing. But, I'm sorry, I meant June the 20th. Sorry about that, guys. June the 20th, a council, a council meeting at 6:00 PM. So also with that, the state has approved for us to be able to get more support from our previous city manager, Joyce Parker. Joyce Parker was the city manager in the City of Inster, I believe, in 2008, I want to say. Before that, it was, I think, from '6 to '8, something like that, before she was appointed emergency manager over in Ecorse. And she just previously retired from being the deputy treasurer for the state of Michigan. So it's only four deputies in the state, and she was one of them. And now she has her own consulting firm, where she works directly with the state and municipality. So they've agreed to pay, what is it, $56,000, I believe it is, for her to come in and basically work with us, work with this body, work with the administration to look at all of our financials, and then give us a plan of action on what we should be doing. So it's kind of like what Plant Moran has been saying to us for three years, that we need to go back to 2015 as it relates to how we operate. Joyce is going to be saying to us, okay, this is what you have to work with, and this is what you should be doing, and put it down in writing. So all of those things that we talk about, you know, how much can we save? Or what have you saved? She'll be pretty much working with, of course, her group, but also with us, the state of Michigan and Plant Moran, and saying, okay, this is what the City of Inster needs to do, and then give us a report to push a plan of action.
You know what Plant Moran's been doing, telling us what we need to do?
Sort of, kind of.
Isn't that what, do we need another treasurer to tell us we in Digs to do?
No, no, I don't think so. But again, it's about relationships. Ultimately, overall, in the state of Michigan is, they said it several times, and, you know, councilmen, please chime in, that they trust Joyce. They trust, they trust Joyce Parker. They think that she would be an added addition to, you know, to the City of Inster. But she would be our employee, so a contracted employee. Not that she's forced to be here. They could, whatever, they don't, you know. This was something that I actually asked for, to be able to help us a little bit more, just kind of. Again, Plant Moran works for us too, which, that's a different number. But they do a lot of, you know, our assessments, taxes, all of that stuff. So they're actually working data, on the day-to-day stuff, where Joyce would be looking at, you know, forensic type of audit, working with the auditors, working with everybody, making sure that they pull all that stuff together for us. Now, if it's something that you don't want, then, you know, when it comes before.
No, it doesn't have anything to do with what I want. I'm just wondering how many people we need to tell us, you know, we got the treasurer, we got Plant Moran, now the state's going to pay Joyce to come here. Why don't they just give us the money? We the ones, we need money.
Yeah, I wish it was that easy. You know, of course, we need to get back to our state share revenue. You know, that, that would be ideal, you know, that they took from us. Go ahead.
I think one of the biggest reasons is not that, it's not that she can make a difference, but she can make a difference by her being part of the state and then coming here with the recommendations. but she can make a difference by her being part of the state and then coming here with the recommendations that they, like the guy kind of said, like, we believe in her, okay? And by bringing her in, some of the things that we got to do, you know, because just like we talked about today, you know, cutting the police department, you're cutting the fire department, you can't do that in a city here, you know. I mean, you can do it, but is it feasible? Okay, so other words, there's so many words that it goes back to what happened some years ago in the, when we were in the school system, okay? When we fell short, they come in and say, well, we're going to come in and overview and see, and see what it is, and then that's how we got extra funds in order to continue to move forward, okay? That particular time. Okay, so what I'm saying is, same thing kind of like, you go back and look at E Corse, you know, how she bailed E Corse out and then they're moving on, they're moving out the way. But that's what, that's her job. She's a consultant to come in, okay, and try to deal with the situation that we have, okay? And our biggest problem is, we got to come up with something that we're going to need the state have, maybe, maybe it's a move because the simple fact is, you know, we need a police department, we need the manpower in here, okay? Incester ain't no great, ain't no great city, and a lot of y'all woke up with gunfire and all that stuff here, so we need all the police and fire department that we can get. Many times our fire ambulance running all over this city, okay? And then, I don't know, when was the last time that we've been trying to, because, you know, we got people in the community that really can't afford increases in taxes and stuff like that. So what you look at is that you try to see what you can do on a reasonable note, getting people to come in and buy in like, like a couple of grants and stuff like that, so. Because if we have to go after the military, I mean, nobody going, I don't think nobody going to sit here and live in a, in a community and ain't got police and fire protection. So, this thing we have to keep on our mind. I don't think, when was the last time that we had a military? I was sitting there, you know, keeping it, keeping it real down. Do you remember, anybody remember when the last time you had a military?
I think that's.
I'm sorry. So you have one from the school, so I believe it was Dearborn Heights.
The city though.
Yeah, so you haven't had one from the municipality.
And so, and that's one of the reasons we have to look at also, okay? But I think if we put our heads together and we come out here and try to work with Joyce Parker, I think we're going to, we're going to get some benefits out of it. I can't say that truly, but I'm hoping we get some benefits out of it.
Yeah, I know the other thing that the state treasurer had mentioned that he wanted to make sure that was in the contract, was that they would help us with finding grants and, you know, working with the state and, of course, the feds to do that. And it's on their dime, it's not, again, it's not nothing that we're paying for, I just think it's just added service. It's about resources and, you know, working with other people to help us. Go ahead, Councilman.
I got a question. Um, I know you just stated something about bringing in, looking for more federal dollars. Now, what's going on in regards to our federal lobbyists that we had brought on a few months ago? What's the update in that? Because I know, I believe, we were supposed to do like a six month, so I'm not sure if that time is coming up soon. But I just want to know, what is he doing to bring in money? What money has he brought in so far?
Yeah, he's coming in July the first, he'll be here with us. I know that he has several appropriations in Gary Peters' office, and Gary Peters has never appropriated anything for the city of Incester. And I know that the Department of Public Works is one of them, what is that? I know that you guys got a one point seven million, so he's definitely been working with the feds to be able to figure out how to bring us some money in, but he will be coming to do us an update. Both of our lobbyists will be here the first meeting in July.
Mr. Chair, if you can, if you can speak to concern in the meeting with the state, the audit and the audit firm and the time left of the contract for the audit firm.
To answer your first question, I believe it's, you know, like all of our contracts, they should be reviewed, you know, once a year. And, you know, this particular contract, I haven't seen it. You know, the auditors were brought in by the state of Michigan through Mark Stuldryer, I believe, they've been around that long. So since two thousand and eleven, I believe you were actually part of that body. So, they've been just pretty much the auditors since then, so. The biggest thing with the audit, of course, right now, is the fact that it's holding up our state shared revenues and also grants that we have in the state. And it's totaling about two point four million when we looked at, you know, what we have that's outstanding. After having everybody in the room, because it was like batting back and forth through the administration, where the administration, the city hasn't given us this, Plant Moran hasn't given us that, or the state is not answering this, so everyone was in the room, and the deputy said that's exactly what he was seeking, that it's actually on the auditors. So the auditors has had, has had all the information, you know, for some time now. And their excuse is that they don't have the manpower. So, now, of course, with that being said, they're actually holding us up for the audit being done, because until the audit is done, we can't get out the rest of our state shared revenue or the grant funding that we have that's outstanding from two thousand seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one, from some grants that we got, like, for instance, the fire hydrant, you know, we know we just got. You know that, you know, so it's like, okay, now we've done everything that we were supposed to do. We bought them, we got the invoices, we got to send them back, send them back to the state, but they can't release any funding until the audit is actually done. So, the state said that, I'm sorry, Plant Moran said that, they said late June, early July, but, and then they also said on top of that, that they said that they wouldn't, they're considering not even doing any more audit work after this. So, I would, you know, definitely stress to this body, one of the things that came out of that meeting was that because it's a process as it relates to, you know, going out for another audit, I mean, auditing firm is that we need to, you know, draft a R F P and go out sooner rather than later. So we won't find ourselves in the same situation or not having an auditor at all. Yeah.
So that may be something that we need to do.
Yeah.
We approach him, Brian, like you said, right now?
I know that Councilman Williams said, said that that was something that he was going to do tonight, so I wouldn't necessarily steal his thunder, but I know he had definitely said that already, based off of the conversations that we would have tonight. Councilwoman Washington?
Um, in regards to the auditor, I know you just said Joyce Parker, and she'll be in here doing a lot of that work as well. She won't be doing any of that work?
No, she's not an auditor at all.
Okay, she'll just be looking for holes and trying to see how we can balance out our.
Right, so basically, the main thing, you know, with Joyce again, is that she understands how the city works. She's, you know, she's been here, she's super just really smart and looking at different ways to, you know, save money, but understanding, you know, that we can't afford to cut police and fire, you know? You know, we just can't afford that as a community, to cut police and fire. We don't have enough as it is, and we don't pay them enough as it is, there is a revolving door, you know, from firefighters, you know, being able to get a little bit of money, get some experience here in Incester, then they're off, you know, to a higher paying, you know, job with less stress. But at the same time, you know, Joyce will be able to, you know, look at, okay, this is what you need to do, look at all of our, you know, the union contracts, look at all of our contracts, you know, just, it's nothing wrong with having more eyes on a problem and trying to come up with a solution, and she's the problem solver. That's what she's been good at doing in her career. I'm looking forward to having her here. She will be coming to present to the council, so she'll actually do a presentation and kind of lay out everything. Matter of fact, Mr. Green, if you could send her proposal to the council, I know I asked you to do that already. If you can send that now while you're sitting there, send that to the council, so we'll be ahead of the game with that. So, what she'll be presenting on, it may be some other things that you guys may think of, you know, hey, no, we need this or we need that, you know? Like, we already have Plant Moran doing this, but we need you to focus in on that, so. It's, again, she will be working for us, she doesn't work for the state of Michigan, so it's just merely a suggestion. When I heard that she was, the state?
The state is going to pay?
Yes, yes. Yep, fifty-six thousand for her services.
I mean, how long will she be here?
I believe it was like six months? What was her proposal? Was it six months? Okay. Well, she'll be able to answer all those questions, that was going to be at the next meeting. Of course, I know it'll be a heavy meeting, but it's important. So, hearing everything that you all have heard, and of course, I know that, you know, you guys just received your updated budget book with all of your figures, all of that good stuff in there, we know that we have another couple of weeks before we get to doing any action, but know that the state said right off that the budget has to be approved by June the thirtieth. So even understanding that on next meeting that we can't agree, we can always have a special meeting after that. You know, that gives us another ten days, so we want to try to get this, you know, as right as we possibly can, but we know we're under a deficit elimination plan that we signed to this council body by resolution and said we will do. And if we don't do it, then there's certain triggers that will happen. And the state has said right off, they're not looking to come into emergency manager situation or anything like that, but at the same time, either we're going to do it, or we're going to wait for it to happen. So, it's up to us to continue to look through this budget and see how we can, you know, and any suggestions. I know, Mr. Green, you said that you had another document that you had sent to us about three weeks ago, I believe it is now. It kind of outlines the shared burden of all the departments, everybody across the board taking paid cuts or whatever it is that we need to do, and you can save about one point seven million.
Well, I sent two, one would have us with a surplus of one point seven, but then I sent another one that doesn't have as much cuts, but will end up balancing us out. So I sent two more additional ones for us to take a look at.
Send that back to the top of our emails so we can have that.
Okay.
As well, okay. From this body, is it anything else? I know it'll come up, more things will come up, but we want to just move along. From the general public, as it relates to everything that you heard, is it any questions that you may have? And if you do, please approach the podium, and I apologize to the city clerk because she was trying to figure out who you were, you know, and all that good stuff, so come up to the podium, please, and state your name for the record, because this is a public hearing. And make your statement, your comment, or your question.
De Archers Richardson, citizen, just want to know, how much is the deficit roughly?
Mr. Green?
Well, the deficit is, it started out at like, I think it was one point five million is what it started out. So we have to eliminate that over five years. So you have five years to eliminate that deficit.
So is that what it is now?
Yes.
Just five million?
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, listen, I want to be a little bit clearer though, because when we talk about the structural deficit and then the deficit, right, so can you talk about that just a little bit?
Yeah, the deficit elimination plan just addresses the deficit in the fund. But the structural deficit of the city is where we have a three million dollar problem, meaning that we have fixed revenues of about twelve million, property taxes, you know, things that we can rely on, services that we know we're going to get that's going to come in, those things we can count on, about twelve million. Our salaries and our other fixed expenses that we know we have to pay, fifteen million. So if you've got fixed revenues of twelve, fixed expenses of fifteen, then you're three million in the hole, technically. We're filling the three million gap with grants and property sales and other things, so we're filling the gap, but that's not what we want to do. We want to take those grants and those property sales and build a fund balance. We want to have our fixed revenues match our fixed expenses. So therefore, variable revenues come in and can go into a fund balance. That's what we want to do as a city.
Sandra King, citizen, I have a question. I'm hearing deficits, I'm hearing cuts, but I'm not hearing how to generate, or what's the plan to generate? Owning a business, it's two things you got to do to increase revenue. Either increase spending, so you can increase the revenue, or you got to reduce spending. I hear it's talked about a lot about reducing. Where's the plan to increase income coming in? Where's our, 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 excuse me, where's our source of income coming into the city? Where's our economic stronghold? Where, what we can point at in the city besides marijuana? Because I'm so sick of hearing about marijuana in the city. Where is another resource, other resources that we have that generates income? What are we doing, where's our business district? Where's the companies that we're entertaining and we're bringing in to try to build here besides marijuana? That's my question, because if we don't have anything that we can rely on besides the twelve, that fifteen is always, even if we cut, it's still going to be there, because we're going to cut but need the services. Even if you cut them, doesn't mean they go away, it just means we have reduced services. We have to build a plan that generates long-term wealth for this city, and it can't be just marijuana. We have to have a multi-faceted income revenue system that brings money continuously into the system. I just need to know what's the plan for that?
Oh boy, that's a complex question. I think, Sandra, and being new to the community, I love your passion. You know, the biggest thing that you have to understand is that we're a municipality, first of all. So it's only so many ways that you can technically raise money. And our biggest thing is through property taxes and being able to add more people to the community. At the same time, out of the six point two million, I'm sorry, six point two million, the six point two square miles, we do have industrial spaces that we can be able to add, that's pretty bare, that we can add in more industrial commerce as it relates to bringing in not only more taxes and then, of course, raising the quality of, you know, the taxes compared to homes and their values, raising those values, but also to bringing people in to actually work and then spend money within the area that's going to attract and retain those businesses that are here. So I think everybody in this room is pretty much on that, and, you know, we're looking at different ways that we can do within the municipality to generate money. We can't, it's, it's just so many ways that you can that's really limited to the government, because you're really supposed to, as a government, you, your tax, taxes, and then you provide your service. But, it's just been this spinning wheel, you know, for a number of years as it relates to just our overall consensus and where we need to focus.
And I'm glad you said that, because I came in, I jumped in two feet first.
No doubt.
When I hear reducing police and fire, I'm waiting to settle.
Yeah.
Because the fire department saved my mother-in-law's life when we lost her in my home.
Yeah.
So you're telling me you're reducing that, and I have a seven-year-old son, you know, the shooting just down the street from my house, now you're talking about reducing that amount of safety for my, I left Detroit to come here, because it's a lot safer here, in my eyes. Now you're telling me that the people I rely on to protect me and my family, about, are possibly are reduced, talking about making hard decisions, a hard decision not to cut them. A hard decision to find more money so we can hire the eighth that remiss. That's the hard decision, you need to figure out how to do that, not take away from them, to add to them, because we have young men who are putting their lives and women putting their livelihood every day at a salary that doesn't meet what they desire, what they should be paid. That's not a hard decision to figure out how to cut, no, you need to figure out how to add them. And if you talk about reducing, you got to lose people. I will, you want, you want to change those renters to buy, renters to buy, you have to give them the reason they want to buy in Incester and reduce police force is not the reason to buy. That's the reason to settle.
Thank you for that comment. Yeah, ma'am, you can approach.
Rebecca Daniels, Incester resident. I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on who Joyce Parker is, and from my understanding, you're saying that she's a consultant?
Correct.
That provides, Kelly, read my own writing, provides ways to help budget and generate funds
Correct.
for the city of Incester.
Correct.
And the way she will be paid is this fifty-six thousand dollars that you're stating how she'll be paid. We want, and when I say we, I'm talking about the city. We're not paying her that.
Right.
This money is coming from where?
The state.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and one more thing, you said, um, um, the audit work, the audit work. Plank Moran would no longer be doing that anymore at some point?
Plank Moran doesn't do our audit. Raymond does our audit. It's a totally different company.
So that person will not be?
Well, they should, well, from what we've experienced, last year, we were late with the audit, and we went back and forth with them. And this year, we're late with the audit. So we corralled everybody, so I can hear it from everybody whose fault it is.
So it's like, we gonna fire him?
It's the auditors.
Gotcha.
Yeah. It's the auditor's fault. You're welcome.
Luana Abney Mitchell, Inxter resident. So I'm kinda confused. I guess I've been, you know, I haven't been to a lot of meetings. I've been really busy working for our kids. But, Mr. Mayor, what I'm hearing is that we in the deficit, okay, three million. So what I seen today with you guys working together, asking questions, trying to figure things out, cutbacks, this is the most I ever seen you guys working together. It was like, what? And it's been four years. We could've came up, you guys could've came up with something, we could've came up with something. We could've been giving people tickets for those garbage cans that been sitting outside across from my house for a whole year. It's a lot of things, speeding tickets, there's a lot of things that have been done. But this is the same thing that we have been begging you for, Mr. Mayor, for four years, for a state or city address. So we had know what state our city was in. And, you know, I was just playing with somebody last week. I say, heck, I don't know what state Inxter in. They could be putting a pad, a padlock on our door any day now. And I was just joking, but to hear that we in three million debt, and that's why even when we was going through COVID, I send you several messages saying, we need an update on what's going on with the city. We need to be transparent to know what's going on with the city. We are all struggling. Barely. Bread costs four dollars and twenty-three cent. My family eat Sara Lee bread, four dollars and twenty-nine cent. I'm on social security. We are all struggling. And now to hear that we might give, increase our mileage so we can have police protection and, and the fire department. I need the fire department. I'm an at-risk person for health. I'm over sixty years old. I wanna be, have the opportunity to be saved. But this is so important that we know these things before we get here. Thank you.
Sir.
Hello, everyone. My name's Pastor Steven. I used to live here, maybe seven years. Been trying to start a church. Will launch one in September. But we noticed just for renting in Inxter, the cost per, uh, square foot, we go right over the line into all the other adjacent cities. It's way less. And I just wonder, so many buildings sitting around, and might just, not even for churches, but anybody would want to launch out in any type of business. Is there any ideas to deal with so many buildings that are sitting around that a lot of people probably would wanna use if there wasn't such a difference right on the other side of the line? You know, that could be a, a spot where you can get more revenue. You know, I wouldn't mind some type of, uh, buying a building if I thought, uh, it's more beneficial to just buy it and try to rent. And, and if you go right on the other side of the line, really, I can't remember what it is, but me and my wife, we've been looking. And, uh, it just seems like, how can you charge that much per square foot less right on the other side of the line, but come to Inxter when there's so many buildings just sitting? I just know there's gotta be other people who would want to buy something or to get into some type of, uh, uh, purchase that would then generate revenue for Inxter. Is there any ideas? Do, do you understand my question?
Yeah, no, I totally understand your question, but, and let me, if you want me to address it, let me address it this way. Because the municipality is the municipality, right? And then you have these buildings that you're talking about, and most of them are privately owned. The city doesn't, the city doesn't own any buildings or any structures, unfortunately. And that's where, that's where you get into the African-American struggle in America. But that's a totally different soapbox as it relates to being a distressed city. So what you're talking about, of course, is valid, but, um, it's evident that, you know, you cross over Michigan and Beach daily, and you see the transition from Dearborn Heights to Inxter. And it's unfortunate. But, um, again, we're the municipality, so our power is in, and it's three phases. So it's in ordinance, which this body is the legislative body to be able to create those. And then, of course, there's enforcement through the police department and, and the ordinance. But then it's also too at the judge's level. So the judge was here earlier, and I don't know if she's still in the audience, but that's part of that, where, you know, we can do, we can do all the ticketing. But if the judge says, eh, you know, eh, that's not important, or, you know, they have so much due process, then you still have. And then you, unfortunately, dealing with the broken glass syndrome in, in, in our community. You know, so it's been so many vacancies for so many years. And then even when we start, start to plan and start to work, it's like, you know, pulling teeth or, you know, people are wondering or they think something's happening, you know? So it's just un, it's, it's unfortunate, you know? But, but I totally agree with you, one, one hundred percent, as it relates to, you know, being able to hold people accountable, not just the residents. And I understand this, and people, I don't think people understand this either. All of the property in the city is taxed by the county. Period. Whether you're owner or you're a renter, whether you got a commercial building or whatever it is. If you don't pay those taxes, you get what is called foreclosed on. Period. So the vacant properties, as we've been talking, Sandra, and this a little bit to your question a little bit, I didn't wanna get off into this too much, is that we have eleven hundred vacant lots in the city, and we've been trying to sell them and get them off of our, our role, which is we're getting nothing except liability, and get them back into the hands of people like yourself that, that want to actually build the community and help the community. But know this, that those people, those vacant properties, we've been ticketing them, ticketing them, ticketing them, and now hopefully the due process is getting to where it needs to be. But it is a legislative body, executive body, and a judicial body, and all of us have to be working in, in harmony in order for it to really work. Okay? Ma'am, please? Yes?
Marla J. Edwards Wheeler, um, citizen. And I say this to every single body out here. In the last year, I have bought four pieces of property. With my realtor, one without, that would make five, land, building. If he says that there are so many vacancies, why won't we get together as a community and buy those and put those back on the tax roll? Because it's a shared responsibility. It's not just their responsibility, it's our responsibility as a whole. When we don't buy, we crumble. We allow others to come into our city, buy pieces of our city, and put our necessary services to rest. And we can't afford that. Nobody wants to live where there's nothing to have. No, buy it. Buy it. I mean, that's, that's what I'm talking about. I, I called my realtor a couple of days ago, a couple of weeks ago, and said, I got four more pieces I'm looking at. You ready? She said, yeah. So you gotta come on, let, let's, let's stop talking and be about it.
And the realtor's actually sitting right there, Sandra, so you can talk to her, so.
Let's stop talking about it and be about it.
Yeah. Yeah, so if it's privately owned, it's privately owned. That's what we gotta understand. We are in America. I don't think people understand that at times, that we do live in America. All right, then, as it relates to anyone else from the public? Okay. From this party? Okay. Motion to close public?
I was just gonna say, I did receive, or we received, the PCS, uh, report. It's in the spreadsheet. It's multiple tabs.
Okay, so, but we need to actually print it off too, though. And get it to you so you can be in their books. So let's work with the city clerk to do that. Anything else? Motion to close public hearing?
Some move.
There's seconded?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ennays? I just have a motion carries. Consent agenda?
So move with the ad, am I adding this one?
The consent agenda. We've already done approval of the regular agenda. This is the consent agenda. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Right.
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Ennays? I just have a motion carries. Item six, boards, in commissions?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Please.
Are we gonna try to get people on a DDA? Because that's downtown development. If we don't have members?
Yeah, we have two, we have two that we're appointing tonight, and we're...
What I'm saying is, we adding two.
Uh-huh.
But will there be a meeting? Is it gonna be a quorum? Do we have a meeting?
Yeah, well, we,
Are we starting to add someone?
Add these two, we'll probably add another two next week. I know that I'm on that. We'll probably end up putting the planner on that as well. But we're definitely working towards that.
Right there. I'm talking about you. You give us, give, give the city clerk your stuff and you'll be added on there.
Yeah.
That's your appointment, all right?
Yeah, but I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. You need that energy. I'm, I'm okay with that. Okay. All right.
All right.
So we do have two for the downtown development authority, and I need a motion from the body, one at a time.
Okay.
I, I need, yeah, I need for you guys to do it. My chair, yes, sir.
I, I make a motion to, uh, appoint Kendal A. To the DDA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question I'd like to ask. Are these, both these people members of the group that resigned en masse a couple of years ago?
I think so. I think he was. He resigned to something.
I'm just, I'm inquiring, does anyone remember? Because there was a group that just resigned all their positions.
He was once on one board. I can't remember which one, but I do remember.
Okay, all right. Well, all I'm trying to find out is if this, if they were part of this group, uh, what kind of commitment do we have this time?
Well, he's here. I'm pretty sure he's committed. He's in the community. He's been around. And we, we talk directly, so he, he know what I expect. So he put his name out there, and he did his resume like you guys asked.
Okay, I'm just inquiring.
All right. Okay. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Ennays? I just have a motion carries. Second person, please? Anyone?
How was we doing, Wury?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, motion to, um, appoint Wury to the D... I'm sorry.
DDA?
The DDA, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Wury.
Wury?
Yeah. I don't, I don't wanna butcher the last name.
Onamake, is he here?
Onamake. I don't wanna butcher the name. I don't wanna butcher the last name. Kendal A, can you, uh, can you say his, her last name, please, for me?
Rary Onamake.
Onamake, okay. Wury Onamake.
All right.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, we've been already motioning and seconding. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Ennays? I just have a motion carries. All right, getting into the ordinance, city clerk? First reading?
A is the first reading of the Inxter Code of Ordinances, Chapter fifty-five, Stormwater Control.
All right, moving right into the next item, please. New business, city clerk?
Item nine A, um, is consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel located on the north side of Hazelwood between Henry Roth and Metal Belt, which is in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars to JTK Property Solutions.
With your pleasure? Excuse me, we're still in session, please?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Please.
Um, with this being in the district, what do they plan to do? JTP, I mean, JTK Property Solutions, who they plan to do with that parcel?
This was the one that was actually part of their driveway. Yeah, so they wanted to purchase the... Yeah, you come on. When you're looking at that picture there, you see it's like all part of their driveway.
Yeah, I couldn't really read it, no.
Go ahead.
That is actually attached, adjacent to a home that's on the market. And the realtor who's trying to sell it has, is having a problem because it's vacant, and they want that part of the land to be able to go with that. So they wanna be able to market both pieces together.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Ennays? I just have a motion carries. Item B, please?
The next item is to consider approval of a street closure, block party application for Annette Cook Sparkman to celebrate an anniversary on New York Street between Inxter and Burlington on June tenth, twenty twenty-three, from two PM until midnight.
With your pleasure?
So move. Second.
Moving properly, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Ennays? I just have a motion carries. Item C, please?
Item C is to authorize our attorneys to, uh, reject a counteroffer from plaintiff and pursue actual costs incurred by the city.
Some move.
Second.
Moving properly, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Ennays? I just have a motion carries. All right, moving right into public participation. As you approach the pu, the podium, please state your name for the record. Uh, even though we're gonna call your name, please state it for the record, and you would have three minutes to address this body. Yvonne Moore?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city officials, and our citizens of Inxter. One, I just wanna tell you something very exciting. You know, we always hear a lot of bad news, but I have some excellent news coming out from housing. We had a, a safety contest, an essay for the HAV group, for playground safety. Four of our kids presented posters. Two of them won, three of them won first place, one won second place. They were submitted to the HAV group in Washington, DC, and two of them won first place nationally. They were highlighted in this week's Telegram. So, um, Ms. Gina Wilson Stewart highlighted them, and it was something, they were really shocked to see their picture in the paper.
Outstanding.
Wanted to let you know of that. Um, secondly, the...
I want to bring them before the council, so...
Okay, I wanna make sure that they come to you. Secondly, um, I see she's left on, Ms. Luana Mitchell from Westland School Board. Well, I just wanted to tell her that, one, the program that she was talking about for the kids has already been circulated, and some of our kids have already, um, went online and registered for the, the course for the summer. It's an excellent program. They're gonna get paid fifteen dollars an hour for twenty hours a week for six weeks, and they will get free driver's training, um, all phases of the driver's training. But they must do the full six weeks, but they're excited about that particular program. So I wanted to tell them thank you for that. We will be having our resident, um, Second Annual Resident Appreciation Day, uh, July twentieth, uh, for housing. We are asking for anyone that could participate. We would like for them to participate. There are still need of donations. We are asking for anyone that could participate, we would like for them to participate, there are still the need of donations, so if you want to participate or wanna make a donation, please see our executive director, uh, Mr. Aaron Cooper. And lastly, um, starting, um, June twenty-sixth through August twelfth, uh, we will be doing our new summer school class. I'm really excited about this this year because, um, we're having, we're gonna be teaching automotive skills to our kids, um, every second Saturday and they will be picked up from the site and brought back, so they'll be learning all aspects of, of how to fix their own vehicles and mom vehicles and everybody. Um, secondly, um, thirdly, we will be having academics, we will have someone that will be teaching sewing, we will have also someone's gonna be coloring school, we're having someone come out. But my best thing is that, our own, Mr. Timothy Williams will be teaching the children how to learn how to play piano. So that is, so we're looking forward, the only other thing, we are still in need of trying to get funds because we did not get our funding back for this year to help with take the kids on trips. So we're, um, anyone that can help, we appreciate it, you know, if you know anywhere we can go, take them, you know, where it's not really expensive and we can be able to try to get a bus, that's the only thing we're doing, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Trustee Marla J. Edwards, W C C C D, and just try recovery.
Hi, again, trustee Edwards Wheeler, this time, still citizen of Inkster from Wayne County Community College District. Um, we have been working with you all, with the city and council and mayor for a few years on the MOU for Wayne County Community College District. We do understand that it unfortunately was vacated because of COVID. We're back again. We sat down with the mayor approximately, uh, six, seven weeks ago and our, um, councilwoman in our area, which it will be seated in district two for it at the complex and we are still waiting on the MOU to be signed. Uh, we did have a conversation with Mr. Green and Mr. Green indicates that you don't want the classes that we're talking about and that there's three classes, drama, uh, business and accounting, that he would prefer to be there and that he would do the recruiting because you don't have time for it. We are still waiting on that MOU to be completed because there was just some grammatical errors in there, the year and something else, but even the things that we offered, the free classes, the cohort that's coming in, that we would take care of all that cost, that everybody over the age of sixty was for free, we're still waiting on that information being given back to us and I'm constantly getting the questions daily about where that is and we still don't have that MOU completed. So we're waiting on that to get back in our hands because we're, we're, when we sat down and had the conversation, we were talking about it could start the next week, boom, 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 boom. And here we are, seven weeks later and it has not yet been addressed, so.
Mr. Green, please speak to that.
So, I didn't see the revised contract, did you get the revised contract?
No, you told me that you actually spoke with the gentleman from, a gentleman by the name of Brian and you were waiting for him to get back with you.
And I got back with him.
So what, yeah, so what, what is this?
I haven't, still haven't spoken with him.
You spoke to me.
I spoke with you.
You spoke to me and I indicated that I would talk to Brian and I still haven't heard anything back, he said that you didn't have time. Those are the words that were given to him.
We reviewed the contract, we reviewed and approved it, it just had to be changed because it had a typo in there from the previous year.
Yes, sir.
Prior to COVID, so that's what you're waiting on, correct?
No, sir, that was already sent back.
Okay.
Yeah, that was sent back. Yeah, once, once, once it changed.
Hold on, Marla, hold on, because you could've called me about this, but anyway, Mr. Green, you told me after we sent the revisions from David, that you were talking directly to Marla, but you were waiting for Brian, whoever the person is, to talk to you about what you wanted, not what I wanted, about what you wanted, about what you wanted, not what I wanted, what you wanted to see as it relates to the actual curriculum over there and that me having time for what, what are you talking about, I do so much around here too already.
Right.
What are, what are we talking about, she just put you on the spot.
I know.
Because she know that I didn't say that I, I don't have time to do, what, what are we talking about right now, so clear it up.
Well, exactly. So what I said to you was, he's not gonna go out personally and recruit students.
We didn't ask him to.
Okay, again.
He said he's the mayor, he doesn't have time for that, that's exactly what you told me. And that you already had a program going on at the rec center and that you had the time to do it, when in actuality, when I talked to Brian, what he's doing is trying to get us to sign a contract with him to teach, to certify him to teach at Wayne County, the reason why it's being held up.
Can I speak?
Yeah, you can, because you're on the spot now, man.
It means he won't let me speak.
Go ahead.
First of all, I never said anything like that, what I said was, he's not gonna personally go out and recruit, he's gonna assign a team to do that, correct?
That was already cleared, sir.
Okay, that's all I said. Secondly, I already teach. I'm already, can I speak?
The way your system doesn't have anything to do with the MOU that we have already agreed to, can you speak? It has nothing to do with that, I can't speak.
All right, so I'll be, I'll call you tomorrow and you, so both of us can get together.
Well, I would like us to get together with, again, with, uh, the chancellor.
Yeah.
With the attorney, everybody, so that when we meet with you, your time is valued, it's signed as a directly result with everybody sitting at the table and it's a done deal, so our students, just like when they talk about, all of this ties in together as equity for the city of Inkster. Every single bit of it.
Oh, yeah, I understand that, I've known when it brought it.
Absolutely, and we've been trying and trying and trying.
It sounded like it was some miscommunication.
Oh, yes, sir, it was more, it was a lot of miscommunication.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm steady getting that, in addition to that, thank you.
Well, we know, we, we appreciate all of that, what you just said.
Now, let me get to the other part of my three minutes.
Go ahead.
I have also in the city, in district two, opened up an outpatient community mental health center. That center, that center actually has five therapists, we have four full bathrooms, we have a placing for our homeless population to be able to shower, eat, go in the clothes closet, get everything that they need. We are employing two barbers to cut hair twice a month at no fee, we take care of that, so that we can see about getting our residents back to a place of well-being. That well-being is not just mental, emotional, but psychological, physical, financial, all of those paired together. We're offering them an opportunity at a half hour of time to either use the computer or the phone or fifteen minutes apiece to get in there and find out if they have email, snail mail, whatever it is that they have to get back on their feet. We are located at twelve fifty Middlebelt in the city of Inkster and we are glad to be here to be a part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig, I will not, Craig, Craig, what is his last name, Craig? Mr. Craig, Kabala? He left.
Mr. Craig, right there.
Mr. Craig?
There you go, right there.
Mr. Craig, please, state your name for the record, please.
Craig, you're welcome.
Go.
North River Park Drive.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Water main project in our street.
Yes.
I was in this business for a long time and I think the crews.
We're, we're still, and we're still in session, please. Go ahead, sir.
Um. I live on North River Park Drive and you guys, we did a water main through there, connected the water meters up and everything and I'd done this business work my whole life and these crews that you hired were the best guys I've seen work. They came in as a team, they went right through the neighborhood, production perfect, they laid the water mains, the concrete, everything. I've done this my, my, my whole life, I was amazed at how well this has gone so far. So whoever's in charge, whoever did it, whoever hired them, it's cost effective, you got your bang for your buck, as far as I can see. So I think it's, the neighborhood got tore up and put right back.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Sanders, please. Say one more time.
So I come on threefold, first as a, as a resident of the city. Um, so I live on the corner of Dunning and Metal Dell and I've talked to Mr. Bevis about the issue that I'm having with this pothole. Well, this pothole nearly caused an injury to my mother getting out of her car uh, because of the way some people were parked on the street. She had to get out right there to let my son out and she stepped into that divot right in front of the water, right in front of the sewer drain. Now, we're not a, you know, a litigious people, we're not gonna sue our people, but we need to get that fixed ASAP because it's, it's a, it's a dip on the corner of Dunning and Metal Dell that is getting deeper. They came out and they did patches, neck, you know, they did a patchwork around it, but they didn't address the major issue, which is the wa, the divot right before the sewer drain that prevents water from going into the sewer and there's more erosion. Thank you, appreciate that. That's my, uh. Okay, yeah, they patched on, they patched on Metal Dell. Yep. They patched on Metal Dell, but they didn't address that issue, the big issue. Um, secondly, um, the lots, I will call you. So there's two lots behind me because we're talking about buying in the city of Inkster. I called about the lot on Plum and Metal Dell, one is owned by the state, is one is owned by the city. A person from the clerk's office, ma'am, told me that the, the one owned by the city was sale pending. That was three years ago, still hasn't been sold. But the people who are cutting the grass by that, on that lot, they get right up to the back of my fence and three feet of Inkster's property is not being cut. So I have a growth that has started, that is like about a foot and a half, no, about two feet high right now. Last year I cut it down, it got up to five feet, I caught your crews three times, I say, hey, this is part of Inkster property, y'all need to cut this down. They said, okay, fine, and they never cut it down, so I had to get out there and cut it down myself. I didn't send the bill because I figured you guys, it was, somebody else was getting paid for it, but I will not be cutting that lot down again, so it won't grow, but if it overgrows into my property and gets three feet high, I will be sending the city a bill for having to cut down some lawn on your property because it gets growth and then the weeds start coming through my fence that I just put up and I don't wanna have to deal with the overgrowth into my yard, so if we can have that addressed as well. Thank you. Lastly, coming with some great news, as a, as a, as an employee of American International Academy, the only K-12 district in the city of Inkster, we are a public academy and we're accepting, and we're accepting more new students, but we're also working with the city of Inkster. We, we, we were in the parade, which we are, we're glad to participate in that. We are a major contributor for the all-city, the all-class reunion, we, we've, we're a sponsor for that. We're looking to sponsor and be a part of everything that Inkster has to offer. I saw the movie night that you have, you guys set up and I saw the screen that the officer put up. I literally saw that screen, he went, he part, he, he had, I called the school and I purchased for the movie night a twenty-five, twenty-four foot screen that I will, if with the permission of the Detroit Police, with Inkster Police Department, I will bring out every Friday to set up so that we can have more visibility for the movies that we have. I have a sound system that we're willing to let the movie night parties, use for that, so we can get a better sound for our movies, for our kids. We are here to be a part of Inkster. We're not taking from Inkster, we want, we want our kids here. We want our kids to be involved and educated by our people in a way that benefits our city. We would like for the city to support us, the next time you come here, I appreciate the bags from Westland, I'm representing every one of you guys with a bag from AIA as well. Don't knock, I appreciate your ministry, amen, I appreciate your ministry, but I want Inkster represented by Inkster people. And if you ever want a tour of our great school, just call us up, we're willing to do tours anytime, any day, all right? We need our kids being educated in our city. We have free transportation, free lunch, our summer school is free if you're a student of AIA. We have no limits on where you come from or your, uh, your educational background, we just need you in there, that's my three minutes.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Commissioner Buck?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I'm here today as Commissioner Buck to the Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, it came to my attention that, looking at the, uh, website, I think the website, uh, needs to be updated again for expiration dates and who's in which district. I know me and Troy worked on that last year, but some kind of way it keeps getting jumbled around, but while I was doing that research, I determined that I have three or four members that were not, um, that are inactive now. Uh, their term is ended. Uh, Walt Johnson, I didn't get anything that he, um, he recertified March twenty twenty-three, he expired. Shirley Hankerson, district two, um, her term expired April twenty twenty-three. Kalida Mohammed, uh, district three, I think that she got hers done, but I'm not sure, I didn't get anything in the email, she expired April twenty twenty-three. So pretty much like more than half of my board has expired and I would like to not lose, um, I can't conduct any business without active board members. We also still have a vacant seat for the council pick and I sent over several letters, uh, about Ms. Kamia Mitchell, she resigned last year, but she's still showing up for district six, so what is that? District one, district two, district three. I'm not sure when Ray was reinstated and when he expired, because it just says March twenty twenty-two, which I know that's not correct. Uh, district six and a council pick, so also James Richardson, a mayoral pick from April twenty twenty-three, he also expired. So that's my entire board except for myself and Mr. Brown. So I wanted to be answered council's attention, please, I need board members for me to conduct business. If you like the way that we've been doing things so far for Parks and Recreation and how we've been progressing, I can't do that without the help of every district.
Absolutely.
Um, and I believe, that's it. Yes, it also has, uh, Luana Abney Mitchell expired as well, so, um, I remember Troy and I worked on this, we got the dates resolved for when we meet, that is correct and it's correct on the calendar, but we can't seem to get the expiration dates and the districts for each member, correct?
Luana is, is two seventeen twenty-four. At two twenty, two seventeen twenty-four?
She looking for the website, website.
Okay, so give her a call and Troy and you guys, they can get that updated.
Correct the website, but also please, please reinstate your people or, you know, let me know what's going on so that I can conduct business properly, because if I go based off this list, I can't have a meeting this Thursday.
Right.
This Mohammed was re-upped.
Mohammed was reinstated?
He was reinstated this year, I brought it up myself.
Yeah, I remember that.
She sent me an email and I, uh, re-upped her this year.
Okay, so that's me, Commissioner Ray Brown and Commissioner Kalida Mohammed, so that's three people.
And Luana Abney Mitchell.
Luana, okay, uh, she's, okay, four, four people.
Ray Brown is in district five, is that correct?
I don't think so.
It said both of them be two, right?
I think Ray's the council.
Well, it was, she, he is in two, but he's in five.
I think Ray Brown.
No, I know Ms. Hankerson's in two, no, I know that.
Should be, I'm not sure if he was a mayoral pick or a council pick.
Right, that's what.
You're the mayoral pick.
And, okay.
You did the council pick.
Because my, my person, Walter Johnson, he, he hasn't resigned in his.
Okay, so you need to reinstate him, because he expired, um, on my list, he expired, I think.
He expired, uh, March first.
So they put Ray Brown in tribe, but Ray Brown should be a council.
You updated that for him, because it says on my list, twenty twenty-three, he expires.
He's not out till the twenty, uh, twenty-five.
Okay, so that's five people that I have, but the list is just not correct.
The, the list is not correct on the website, looks like.
So we gotta.
Walter to twenty twenty-five, Ray should be in the council spot.
My district should be open.
And your district should be open.
Okay, okay, so, okay, I'll give a call and we'll get that, uh, corrected and situated.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. All right, getting right off into it, treasure anything?
Yeah, just to clear up that situation, I just want everyone to know that, first of all, um.
Mr. Treasure, don't digress.
No, I'm talking about Parks and Rec.
Okay, go ahead.
Parks and Rec. Um, I did, uh, speak with the gentleman at, um, Wayne County and there was no problem with the courses that were offered. That gentleman and I discussed adding courses and that gentleman said that he could provide the professors for any courses that I recommended. I'm already a professor, I've been a professor thirteen years and I would like to teach kids accounting, I'm a CPA, I would like to teach them business, I would like for them to be able to work at the rec center and work for the city, so those were additional courses that I inquired about and I was just waiting on him to get back with me, that's all.
Okay, all right, city clerk?
Um, I just wanted to, uh, make sure that the June nineteenth meeting is on June twentieth. It's Tuesday, June twentieth, in celebration of Juneteenth on June nineteenth, so. Keep in mind that the meeting next, the next meeting will be on Tuesday, June twentieth.
All right, Mr. Bevis?
All right, Mr. Bivins?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make an announcement to the council, to this viewing audience, and to the public. This is for the whole city of Inkster. The Department of Public Service will be holding a city of Inkster Construction Project Town Hall meeting Monday, June twelfth, Wednesday, June fourteenth, Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, and Thursday, June twenty-ninth, from seven PM to nine PM at the Booker T. Doja Recreation Center. This is for the whole city. So we will be talking about projects that are going on now. We'll be talking about future projects in the next five years, what the city of Inkster will look like. So I'm pleading with all residents and council, if you can, please come out to these sessions, because at the end of the day, our people are in place to do their job, and this is part of their job. Ms. Maya Root, my project manager, will be running this. These are important meetings for us, because you need to know that this city is about to be tore up, and you need to know how to get around. So it's important that you come out, because we don't like it when people call the mayor and tell him, we don't know what's going on, when we put effort in forth to hold these meetings. So we are begging with you to please show up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The dates are June the twelfth, that's a Monday, next Monday.
You do have flyers over there.
And I got flyers right there, I'm sorry. Uh, Wednesday, June the fourteenth, Tuesday, June the twenty-seventh, and Thursday, June the twenty-ninth, from seven PM to nine AM. We made it, nine PM, we made it convenient, so you can eat your dinner and come out to the meeting. You have to come to one meeting, but we hosting, because this is a big city, we got over ten thousand residents, yes. But it's for the whole city.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, you're, you're welcome, Mr. Bivins. Chief Gagnon?
All right, Chief Gagnon?
I do. Good evening.
Good evening.
First and foremost, um, I want to, uh, talk about the movie night that happened Friday night was an absolute success, uh, at the police department, and I want to thank all the people in the past. Really, really great event, a lot of kids came out, a lot of community support, a lot of people volunteered to, to help get the, uh, kids the food and, and beverages and everything else, it was a great movie. Segueing into, uh, Saturday, uh, we had a, uh, gun lock giveaway and, and gun safety awareness program that Inkster Task Force and the police department teamed up on. It really bothers me that it was advertised very, very well by both organizations, the police department, the city, uh, Inkster Task Force, and only one person showed up. That says a lot. Gun locks are important. One of the things that we've seen all across this region is that kids are being killed by guns in homes on a daily basis. Guns that are not secured properly. It is important that you secure your guns. If you have a gun at home, lock it up. We are giving gun locks away. We're giving you education as it relates to gun ownership, receiving a CPL, the training you need to own a gun, what you should, should know, what you should, shouldn't do, and what you can do in accordance with the law, and only one person showed up. That's disappointing, it's disappointing. And it was advertised very, very well. So I want to, uh, I want to encourage people to come out to our National Night Out, which is August first. And we will be giving away the gun locks again, and, uh, go try it again. But these gun locks have to get into the hands of people who want to be responsible gun owners. Lock your guns up. I can't tell you or emphasize enough about it, lock the guns up. Uh, another thing, um, we are looking for, uh, youth from fourteen to twenty-one to join the Inkster Police Explorer Post. Uh, this is a program that the department, uh, partners with the Boy Scouts of America. They, they kind of, uh, administrate it and cover the insurance for it. But the program allows people fourteen to twenty-one to view and, and observe law enforcement, uh, both on a, uh, educational level and on a practical level. They're able to come out and ride with the officers, they work in the police department, they get to see, uh, how the police department operates. And, uh, uh, we're, we're accepting applications for that program right now. You, you cannot, uh, be in any juvenile, uh, criminal probation program, uh, and cannot be, uh, convicted of any juvenile felonies to be part of the program. Uh, this is not like a scared state program, this is a program for those interested in becoming law enforcement officers. So, uh, you can contact my office at three one three five six three nine eight seven three, three one three five six three nine eight seven three, to arrange for a, uh, an application for the program. Really encourage people to get involved in this program. I started as an explorer in, in the nineteen eighties and, and it was really, really beneficial to me, and I enjoyed every minute of it, and, uh, uh, here I am. So it, it is a great program, and, and I just would love to see it flourish again in this community like it did back in the eighties and nineties. It was, we had tremendous program with twenty, thirty explorers at some times, so... And that's all I have.
Uh, excuse me. When is your next movie night?
Oh, that's funny you should ask, uh, I don't think we've announced it yet. I believe it is June thirtieth.
Okay, so, um, my question to you is, June thirtieth, when you have your movie night, can you announce that you are having this, um, gun lock?
Yes.
Maybe you can announce it there, because it's a lot of parents and stuff that will be out there. Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilwoman Wiley?
I just have a question, I was wondering if, um, we've been in contact with USI, because we're talking about saving money, and they had that process that I sent you an email about, where all we need to do is, you know, change payroll, partner stuff, I wonder, was there any progress with that?
Guess they were gonna be sending out a, a date that everyone could meet Zara, HR, and them as well, and then we're gonna meet on it.
Because from what I understand, where our, uh, work, where our workman's compensation and our, uh, payroll process would be simplified, and we'd be saving money. So a lot of times, when we're talking about our budgets and stuff, uh, changing vendors to get a better, uh, resource, a better, uh, product for what we're paying, would, could be part of that.
I agree.
Okay.
So let's follow up with them ASAP, and, and put Councilwoman Wiley in the loop, because I noticed she said she would be willing to work with you guys on that.
Yeah, we were just waiting on a date that everyone could meet, and then also, we were actually trying to look at the finances and see where the cost savings would be, so when we do meet, we'll be on the same page. Because changing payroll companies is not easy, we just got DM Payroll not even two years ago. So if we are going to make a move like that, we want to make sure that there are some savings and not just doing it because they save.
I understand. Anything else, Councilman?
No.
Councilwoman Washington?
Um, I don't know if everyone was able to make it out to the homecoming weekend, uh, not this weekend that passed, but the weekend before, um, I was able to bring a few children, because I have no children of my own, so... Um, a lot of the children was able to, um, enjoy the festivities, it was well attended. Our chief of police, along with our Inkster Police Department, did a very great job with patrolling the area. So just wanted to say, you know, great job, um, chief. And then also, just thank you for having the homecoming here, because it's definitely something that's needed for the kids during the weekend, so... That'd be all.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes, Mr. Chair, you know, I, I think, you know, I just want to say, you know, that was good that you had made mention, um, about the enforcement, um, about how the judicial branch and the executive branch and the legislative branch, um, you know, functions. Because I'm asked all the time, you know, why don't we just write tickets, write tickets? I mean, there's so much, not just write tickets on folks who are doing well, but for those who are, you know, in violations of the code. And you may mention that, you know, we are out there enforcing, uh, because there's so much within the city, uh, that is happening. You know, people are parking on the grass, you know, I think, may mention cans being out, um, grass yeh-ha. I mean, all of these things, you know, I'm asked that question. You know, let's write more tickets, let's do more enforcement. This will en- enable the city to be able to have a revenue source. And you may mention about, you know, we're, we're trying to do that. And, you know, it's still, is a due process as well. You know, it has to go through, uh, the judge and, you know, what have you. So that's, you know, that was good to explain that, because, you know, now some of the residents will know, you know, when we are writing tickets, we are enforcing these codes, uh, but they're still a due process. And one thing I do want to encourage you, Mr. Mayor, you know, we talked about this some years ago, uh, is, you know, having those reports, so that the council can be able to see, or even the new council can be able to see what is going on, how many tickets are being written, you know, some updates of, uh, uh, that's happening in the city. Like one question I have for the DPS Department, you know, on, and Ms. Root did handle the situation, uh, on Avondale, you know, where's a lot of construction's being done. Uh, water is being ran, and water is run, I mean, it's being ran four or five days, you know. Who handles that, who supervises that, who watches over that? So that water won't be, uh, ran in the city for numerous of days, uh, where residents have to call. Uh, is there a supervisor who comes out and watches these construction areas? Because that's a waste of water, I, I, I would believe. Uh, and we, we're gonna be talking about water rates coming up pretty soon. Uh, and it doesn't, it doesn't have a good look to the city, uh, to see, uh, water being ran for four days, three days. Uh, so we, we definitely need those types of reports, so that we can, you know, see what these updates are. Even also, I reached out to, uh, and I want to thank the fire chief for, you know, his quick response. We had a fire in my district, and I thank Councilman, uh, Chisholm, uh, for, you know, just really communicating with me. Thank you, sir. Uh, but, and also, I got sidetracked. But, you know, I want to thank the chief for reaching back out to me, we had a fire not too long ago. And, um, you know, the firefighters could not, um, find any hydrants for water, you know. And the chief reached back out to me and let me know what the process was, what the plan they had in place. But these things, I want to encourage you, Mr. Chair, is to have in these reports that these departments can be able to report out to the council, so that we would know exactly what's happening in the field, so that we won't have to worry these folks. And then we can also report back to our residents, uh, of what's, what's happening. Uh, and also, you know, uh, Ms. Triplett, I want to thank her, and Ms. Gina Triplett. Not my, not my fave, but, you know, Gina's true. No, but, uh, I want to thank, uh, uh, the code enforcement, often Ms. Triplett, the supervisor, uh, because we have a property over on Harrison and Glenwood. I mean, this property, I mean, the grass, the upkeep, and right across the street, two, that's twenty-eight, three, seven, four, and twenty-eight, three, five, one. Uh, she's been working diligently on this property, I don't know if it's a city-owned property, uh, but the grass is just, just, you know, incredibly high. And I know that this is happening over the city, uh, I have several streets, um, that we, you know, that we're dealing with high grass, so I'm hoping that we can get some of those areas cut. I don't know if there's gonna be a crew out, it's gonna be... Okay. Okay, now what, what section are they in right now? I don't know what section, you know, they're, they're starting on, Mr. Chair.
They started south coming north, they started south from this side coming north. But we're cutting the whole city, and we'll be cutting seven days a week, but we get caught up, and then we'll be cutting five days a week constantly, because we're doing the air out, not a contract.
Okay, so United is not gonna do any...
United is doing the buildings, we're doing the lots and the vacant homes.
Okay.
And the parks will be done.
And, uh, I believe that's, that's, that's all I, that's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Williams?
I have one that I'd like to make, if I'm in order, um, I, I would like to place on the agenda, go out for RSP on our auditors. And let, let me say this, I don't know, a lot of us have been sitting here, and every year we've had problems, the lateness of our audit, okay, and it's ridiculous. If it's a problem with administration, then the auditor should be able to tell us that, you see what I'm saying? But see, I've seen, I have seen since I've been here, that it's always late, but yet it's still, it don't always be administration, you see what I'm saying? Okay. But I did find here, here one thing that I heard that they, they showed a help, or whatever that is. But I think that, number one, that ain't our problem, because our problem is that we need to get our audit, audit in on time, but we won't lose any money. Like right now, uh, I think the conversation I had, we, we got, how many millions now that's tied up? Over two million dollars tied up, uh, the auditors are hold, holding this money up. Because I asked a question, a funny question, I asked, uh, the state, the state guy, when he was in here, I said, well, can't you just release the money to? He's, oh, no, it don't work that way. You see what I'm saying? So these, these auditors, i- is very important, okay? And so we, we got all of the grant, uh, uh, I think it's grant, the grant money that we supposed to receive, we don't even see, they got it held up because of these auditors. Okay, now, these auditors gave us help, a year, or a couple of years in a row, well, I, I can almost go say three years, okay? That we've had problems with them, okay? We've been late, you know, I remember telling, what, what, what year was that now? You was here longer than I was, how long did it take us to get an audit to, uh, when it was closed? It didn't close in, oh, February and January and March like that.
We used to have our audit in December.
Yeah.
We used to have our, we used to have our audit in December, each year.
And that's where, that's where it should be, where you know what you're gonna do going in the next following year. So I would like to place on the agenda, if I'm in order, that we go out for RSP.
Yeah, we'll put that together, we'll put it together and put it on the agenda for you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilman Chisholm?
Do you need a motion for that?
No, 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 we just gonna put it on, yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, I did attend a budget meeting on this past Friday with you all, as you stated, on with the Department of Treasury, so thank you for allowing me to do that. I know you actually told the entire council, but, um, I was able to get there, so thank you for that. Uh, secondly, I don't know if you all had received this email or not, it was one of the Juneteenth celebrations. I'm sure there'll be many, as always, throughout the city of Inkster. If not, this one is on Saturday, June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, from twelve PM to three PM. It's called Emancipation to Empowerment. It will be held at the Leanna Hicks Public Library, twenty-five hundred Hamlin Drive. Al Noor, We Rise Dancers, Davion Bennett and David Hicks Elementary School Choir, under the direction of Natasha Zahora, I hope I didn't butcher that last name. If you all didn't receive this, let me know and I'll forward it over to you guys. Okay. All right, cool. Okay, um, secondly, if I had the permission of trustee Abney Mitchell to make the announcement about the gun walk?
Absolutely, and thank you so much for it.
No problem. So the Inkster Community Partnerships, um, will host a gun walk again this year on June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, at seven PM. This is a walk to end gun violence, and I believe the color is orange, right?
Yes.
All right, I participated in it last year, and I just implore you all to, um, this is something that comes right after the gun safety event, to please come out, as we all know, we have tons of gun violence everywhere, and participate in this, and make gun violence and gun safety more aware and known to our community and the masses. And lastly, I wanted to ask Mr. Bivins, regarding that Dearborn Heights project that's happening at the border of Inkster and Dearborn Heights with all of that stuff, and they got all their equipment in Inkster, and tearing the heck up out of Avondale more than what it already is and what we can stand. And even i- is a real big inconvenience coming down Beach Daily as well. Is that something that's gonna be talked about at the town hall, or is that something you could, um, speak upon now?
As you stated, that's a Dearborn Heights project that was ordered as a maintenance by Eagle.
Eagle?
Yeah, so it's an L forty-two sewer that runs through Inkster, Dearborn Heights, that we share, it goes to the river. That sewer is now being abandoned.
That sewer is now being abandoned, not the project you see over there, because that's the water going to the river.
Ah, okay.
With all their attention on, on both sides. We're attending, we're attending meetings every Thursday. We're participating in that. But with all its being over there, we'll be put back to the way it was, or better.
Okay, great. And even just, I guess, a slight resurfacing of that portion of Avondale that they're currently occupying as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, Mayor Proto?
Um, I just have one thing to say. Um, I know Mr. Bivens probably tired of me, because I be texting him on weekends, asking him this and that, but I do want to tell you, thank you. I saw your assistant drive down my street, I said, "Hmm, she must be getting these people because they're cutting the tree down and get it all over the middle floor." So I saw you, Tori, and when I texted him, he said, "That's us." I'm like, "Okay, I'm just, just checking." But you guys do a lot, and I get, sometimes you may not be credited for it, but you are the one department that I don't have a problem, ever have a problem with, budget-wise or anything. You stay on top of things. I just want to tell you, congratulations to all of you.